All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg. Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vitaglia.
Here.
And Mayor LeBrusse is absent.
What about Stephanie?
I started with Stephanie.
Yeah?
Yes. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Thank you. Can we stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. Under God, indivisible, with liberty
and justice. Okay, before we get into the agenda, the City of Hackensack suffered a great loss this week with the passing of Reverend Robert Davis. I am asking all of us to take a moment of silence for reflection and respect following the passing of Reverend Robert Davis. Thank you, everyone. On behalf of the entire council and the city administration, Reverend Carolyn Davis, you have our deepest sympathies for yourself and all of your family members to experience such a loss. I've gone through something similar recently, and I know how difficult it is for everyone involved. You know, you have all of our sympathies, and you need anything, Carolyn, you call on us, and we'll be there to help you. All right, with that, City Manager, you want to go through the agenda?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. Tonight is the Committee of the Whole Agenda for October 6, 2020. First for discussion is a ordinance update for the Clay Street parking. There was some consideration adding additional parking on Clay Street and a request to have no parking when snow is covered. It had to be amended in the city ordinance. And to my knowledge, the first introduction of that will be tonight, which, if approved by the council, signs will be installed on the portion of Clay Street by Carver Park, which will obviously give notice to the motoring public and the residents. And it's a change to the ordinance of 170-66, Schedule 17. Any questions? Okay, next is the 329-331 Railroad Ave ordinance. This is a consideration for property owners to purchase as a minimum bid this property. It's currently city-owned. The minimum bid currently recommended is $50,000. We'll see if we have any takers. If not, obviously, we'll go through the process, and the council will decide whether they rebid or we find another purpose or use for. But as the city's trying to do, we're trying to make sure that we take advantage of all the property, make sure it's on the tax rolls, and make sure that we're not carrying inventory that the city can't use. Obviously, we need to find productive property that could be utilized either by our residents for the city's purposes or by our own, you know, if it was a big enough piece, the DPW could move there or something like that.
If you don't mind me asking, where is this located at?
This is located at 329-331 Railroad Ave. And please don't ask me the exact location, because I couldn't tell you. I'm not that familiar with where it starts and stops on railroad. I'm sure Albert Dipkamp pointed out to you, but I don't have that knowledge with me.
I'm happy to try to. It's on, yes.
Thanks, Albert, for saving me.
Deputy Mayor, it's on the, it is on the west side of railroad. It is, it does not front railroad. It is a landlocked parcel that's situated behind residential properties. I can't describe it accurately, because I've never been on it.
Is it by Anderson Street? Is it by Target?
It's closer, it's closer to, I think, cross streets offhand. 321, I can try to pull it up, but it's closer to Anderson Street than Essex Street, that's for sure. 329 Railroad.
In the meantime, I, you know, do you have any other specific questions about the property?
No, just where it's located at, that's it.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll see how we do, if we get any takers, and then we'll proceed from there. Unless there's any other questions, I'll move on to item three. Item three is in reference to a discussion of the shade tree advisory ordinance. The city is attempting to define roles. Obviously, we have a shade tree commission, and we want to make sure that they're productive, but we also want to make sure that we're not either crossing paths, which I interfere with their function and they interfere with mine. So under 42-4B and under 42-4C, under 42-4B, there's a new process, and the plan is most utility companies don't even notify the DPW are doing most of the time. So basically, the utility companies come in and say, oh, we're going to trim these branches. They don't notify us. Then the next thing you know, the City Manager's office or the DPW gets a complaint that someone has absolutely butchered the top of these trees and cut them all out. What we're trying to do is to make sure that we're working in concert to make sure that they obviously maintain the utility, but more importantly, we're not just chewing up trees for no good reason, because it's just easier to trim them all at once than selectively trim them with frequency to make sure that they're done. So the other part of this is the purpose of the Shade Tree Committee shall be, A, establish programs for protection and preservation, removal or replacement of existing shade trees situated in the public right-of-way upon city-owned properties; B, establish plans and programs for planting of new trees within and upon city-controlled properties; C, advise and aid private property owners in care, maintenance, and preservation of their trees in those instances where such assistance is requested by the property. So like I said, we're trying to define roles, make sure that they understand what the city and the mayor and council has intended for them to perform, and for me to continue to make sure that, one, the safety of the community and the beautification of the city remains intact. As I've explained numerous times, the City Manager does not authorize or direct the removal or the cutting down of trees for no good reason. There's usually a safety concern or after a concern, after a storm, or in certain cases, we will call in, if it's even questionable, an arborist to make sure that we are on the right path. But like I said, we're just trying to preserve, keep this. Of course, there is also a tree replanting. So we're tracking how many trees we remove and replace them when we replant. And unless there's any other questions, that's all I have on this ordinance. No questions? Okay, we're going to move to discussion of the bond ordinance, various improvements.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager, was, when you asked for
We're not open to the public right now.
Sorry.
Is Jim Magan on the Zoom meeting here?
Yeah, I'm here, Ted.
So do you want to do this, Jim, or do you want me to read through this?
Yeah, I can do it if you like.
You're the CFO, you won't miss anything, so.
There's two bond ordinances on for introduction tonight. The first one, which is number 41-20, is our annual bond ordinance for various capital improvements. The ordinance itself is for $5,365,000, and it includes, among the items it includes would be the purchase of the Sears parking lot, the improvements that we're going to be making to Columbus Park, which have been discussed at several meetings. We're going to be doing renovations to City Hall on the third floor. For our DPW department, we're going to be purchasing an aerial lift bucket truck for the tree division, as well as an Elgin Badger Street Sweeper for the sanitation division. The ordinance also includes $2,270,000 in the annual road resurfacing program. Now, included in the $2,270,000, we did get a grant for $271,000 to do Beach Street, the section of Beach Street from Summit Avenue to First Avenue. The other streets that we're looking to do would include Fair Street from Lodi to Kansas, Campbell Avenue from South State to New Street, Second Street from Passaic to American Legion Drive, American Legion Drive from Summit Avenue to First Street, Clarendon Place from Passaic Street to Ross, and Lookout Avenue from Prospect to Clarendon. Now, those are the streets that we would like to do. Those are the streets that we'll be going out to bid on. If the bids come in low, we'll be able to do other streets. If the bids come in high, we won't be able to do all of the streets identified. But the last couple of years, the, actually, the street bids have been coming in pretty well. So we're hopeful that the streets that I listed, we're going to be able to get done. The second bond ordinance that we're going to be doing is number 42-2020. This bond ordinance is for $3,050,000, and this is for, it's kind of a continuation of two bond ordinances that we did late last year, one for stormwater improvements and one for sanitary sewer improvements. This bond ordinance is $3,050,000 for both stormwater and sanitary sewer improvements. The, what we're looking to do is we've been working on trying to alleviate flooding in different sections of the city. The bond ordinance we did last year was one and a half million, and we knew that wasn't going to be enough. So this is the second half of that. In this particular bond ordinance, one of the things that we're looking to purchase is a generator for the East Kennedy Pumping Station. Okay, we doubt that in a storm, the pumping station goes out. We need a generator, an emergency generator for when that happens. We're also going to be looking to work on the stormwater lines on South Newman, Pine Street, the area of Polifly Park, certain sections of Hudson Street, and the flooding that occurs on Temple Avenue. Over on the sanitary sewer side, what we're looking to do with that is some closed-circuit television line of a number of streets, you know, throughout the city, including the James Street, Clay Street, Stanley Place area, as well as some other lines as well. And after we close-circuit television the lines, there's money in the bond ordinance to do the improvements that are needed. Okay, so like I said, both ordinances are on for introduction tonight. The public hearing and the adoption would be scheduled for the next meeting, which is October 20.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any questions of council members of our CFO? Okay. Hearing none, we would go to Halloween. The city, obviously, like all municipalities, has really concerns with Halloween, especially with COVID-19. We're appreciative and understand that Halloween is a big event for the children and the residents of the City of Hackensack, but because of restrictions of COVID-19, we're going to research a drive-through haunted, drive-through for Shini Park, the efforts of the closing of Halloween as it normally is held. My God, I can't even think of the name of the street now.
Clinton.
Clinton will not be held. So residents obviously have the option of having trick-or-treat in their own residence, but a sponsored event on Clinton will not, will not be held. It's, we've had large turnouts in the past. Halloween is a Saturday, as I've been told, and we really can't take the chances of creating, you know, close proximity of COVID-19 and exposure. So Clinton event will not be held. I'm doing the research right now for us to have some kind of, we had it for, the Easter Bunny came and waved to all the kids at a drive-through in Fashini last Easter. We'll try to have something where they basically remain in the vehicle, and there's treats at the end, obviously candies in sealed packages, and we'll see what we can do. But obviously, we leave the discussion and the discretion to the parents of these children on how they're going to celebrate Halloween in their manner. Any questions? I will say that once this decision is made, there'll be an update at the council meeting, and there will also be a posting on the city website. If there are no other questions, number five is, I'm sorry, six is the resolution for the Kubler Agreement for Benefits for the Widow. This firefighter was exposed to working over at 9/11 at the site, became ill. There's a federal insurance policy in a sense that informs that employee became totally and permanently disabled as a result of his heroic participation in rescue, recovery, and cleanup operations at the World Trade Center the following terrorist attack, September 11, 2001. It's incredible to think that this happened 19 years ago. So because of his efforts and his commitment, he is basically memorialized as a hero in our hearts, but more importantly, we protect his family. So this provides a benefit package to his widow and dependents, as long as it's approved by the council. And there's an appropriate resolution to do so. Steve, do you have any comments or anything? Steve?
You and your wife.
Oh, okay. All right, well, we have an approving resolution. Obviously, it'll be called upon by the mayor and council, whether we secure
Sorry, guys, I was on mute accidentally. Just, I was going to say, dealing with the issue that came up previously, Labor Council looked at this and had negotiated with the fire unions to make sure that this was approved by them. It has been, there's an MOU in place to, you know, to sign off on that, so it won't lead to potential other issues down the line. So it should be good to go.
Okay. This would complete the City Manager's report. I don't know if the deputy mayor wants to call upon some clarity on fair share, but
Yes, why don't we do that? I believe Nancy's on the phone, just let her have a little overview before we open it up to the public.
I would just want to make sure it was okay with you.
Fine with me.
Okay. Nancy, do you hear me calling you into service?
I hear you, loud and clear.
This is clearly, thank you, and this is your moment, so thank you.
Oh, all right, lucky me. Okay, so, good evening, everybody. So last, last time I was here, I gave a presentation, let's see, August 18, to have the council approve our settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center for our affordable housing obligation. I thought I would come back and clarify a few things for everybody and give a summary in a different way, that maybe it will help alleviate some confusion. And I'll also be here to answer any questions for the public when that time comes. So our settlement agreement that has been signed is on file for public inspection with the city clerk, for whoever would like a copy. There are, I believe, there is an electronic copy, if you don't want to appear in person. If for some reason the clerk does not have an electronic copy, please let me know, and I will get you one. I'm going to break down the settlement agreement in a different way tonight. There is many types of affordable housing programs. There's state, there's federal, there's also local affordable housing programs, but not all of those units are defined as affordable housing in each program. They don't necessarily all work together. So there could be some affordable units that are federal units that don't necessarily qualify for the state program, which is my area of expertise, and vice versa. There's also naturally affordable units that don't necessarily qualify because they don't fit within the regulations. So I know that, we have said in the past, the city does in fact have substantially more affordable housing than we are applying for credit with the court under the Mount Laurel Doctrine for that reason. State affordable housing laws have their own regulations, which some people know as COA regulations, which is the Council on Affordable Housing. It does still exist. It doesn't, the Supreme Court has taken the authority away from COA right now to process applications, which is why we're in the court, but it does still exist. Maybe the next round, they'll make some rules. We don't know what's going on with them. We also have the New Jersey Fair Housing Act, which created COA, and gives them the authority to create the regulations. So I'm going to go through the city's obligations for each component as it relates to the Mount Laurel Doctrine for the state affordable housing obligations. So currently, there are three components to the city's affordable housing obligation. There is the rehabilitation obligation, which is 582 units. There is the prior round obligation, which is 201 units. And then there's the current round, housing round that we are in, which the city has a zero-unit obligation because it is determined to be an urban aid municipality. Now, the two numbers that I gave, the rehabilitation obligation is a substantially large number as it relates to other municipalities in the state, which is partially why the city has been declared an urban aid municipality. That is called rehab obligation, and then the prior round obligation is what's called a new construction obligation. That means that the city has to create a realistic opportunity for those 201 units to be built. Now, the rehab obligation is to improve the existing housing stock that's for households who already are citizens of Hackensack who qualify as low and moderate income households, as defined by the state of New Jersey. Those standards are different for federal housing, so just keep that in mind. So the city has proposed to meet its obligation with 431 credits toward its 582-unit obligation through, there were significant, there was significant rehabilitation done to some HUD units in federal units in the city, and that would be Barcelona Court, Harry Berkey Gardens, Orittam Court, please forgive me if I'm mispronouncing things, Astraskey Court, and Wind Hall Towers. Okay, so what you will see in our, in our settlement agreement is that we're not claiming credits for all of the units in those projects because, because they don't necessarily line up with the income guidelines for the state. So unlike the new construction obligation that I was talking about before, the rehabilitation obligation does not have a requirement that only 25% of the units can be age-restricted. There's also no other limitation. And the reason for that is because you're dealing with the city's existing housing stock. You don't really have the mean, the control over who applies and who doesn't. It's a voluntary program most of the time, and it doesn't make sound policy sense to have to reject an application, really, because it's a senior, a senior applying for the rehabilitation versus a family or non-senior unit. So the, there is no senior requirement to rehabilitation obligation. Okay, so Barcelona Court is a senior and disabled, facility is the wrong word, development. Harry Berkey Gardens is a senior and disabled development, as well as Wind Hall Towers. The rest are family units. So hopefully, that clarifies the crediting for the rehabilitation obligation. So for the prior round of 201 units, there is a 25% cap on age-restricted housing, and that is 55 and older. So we can only apply 50 units toward that prior round obligation total. So the other cap on what we can apply to that 201-unit obligation has to do with rental bonuses. And COA, in order to incentivize rental house, family rental housing, they allow for a two-for-one bonus credit up to 25% of your total obligation. And under COA's rules, we can apply for 51 rental bonus credits toward our prior round obligation. Okay, so we have 28. So as far as satisfying this obligation, as the senior units go, we have credited Patrick DeZenzio Court, which is another HUD development, 50 units from that project. I believe there's 60 total, but we can only count 50. We have 26 supportive and special needs housing units. We also have 28 family-for-sale condominium units, and that is in Clinton Terrace, Pulaski Place, and Franklin Gardens. We are also, the city is also proposing a 60-unit, 100% family rental project. We have several developers who have proposed a project, have proposed projects. They're in varying states based on what's been happening with, how quickly things can get done with coronavirus. So those, the city still has to review and decide which, which project is best. And then on top of all of those credits and proposed projects, the city has also thought ahead to ensure that as the city redevelops over time, affordable housing units are captured as part of the equation, and the city will be instituting three separate overlay zones where there will be a 10% set aside for affordable units required if the developer comes into those zones and utilizes the densities for residential development in those overlays. Those zones, there are maps attached to the settlement agreement that's on file at City Hall. They generally cover part of Essex, Hudson, Johnson, and Main. We think, the city has put together a very ambitious plan We think, the city has put together a very ambitious plan. I think, you know, I know that Fair Share Housing Center is very satisfied with it. I, I think the city's gone above and beyond to create this, this, the settlement agreement, and I know the master is in support of it, the court master, and, and our court master happened to formerly work at COA, so she knows, she knows the rules backwards and forwards, and certainly would not allow us to do anything that violates COA's regulations. So, I'm hoping that this clarifies a little bit more about this, the settlement agreement that's moving forward. There is a fairness hearing on October 22nd before Judge Patavano, and as soon as we have all of that information, it will be available on the, on the city's website as far as attending that Zoom conference. So, I'll be happy to stay and answer any questions from the public.
Thanks so much. When we open to the public, we'll see if there's any questions, we appreciate.
Absolutely.
It's very involved, so it, it, and I'm glad you explained it yet to us again. Thank you so much.
At the end of the, at the end of the day, how many affordable housings does the city of Hackensack need?
Does it need to satisfy the whole obligation?
Yes.
We need to, we need to create 60 affordable family rental units, and we will have 100, we need to rehabilitate 151 existing units.
So we, we need 210 basically?
Correct. We don't have to build the 151, they're, they're existing within the municipality, but, but yes.
But what do we got to do to the 150?
The 151 obligation, we are required to participate in the county's home improvement program. That's our obligation under the, the settlement agreement. So the county runs a, it's usually funded with community developed block grant funds.
Do those include the senior citizen buildings?
No, the senior citizen buildings, I believe, were rehabilitated, I mean, they can be, they can apply, but I believe those are all done with federal grants. I believe the Hackensack Housing Authority overstaw those improvements. So those were capital improvements done by the, the federal government, I believe.
But those don't count as far as affordable housing?
Yes, they do. Yes. The, the ones that I, that I listed, Barcelona Court, Harry Berkey Gardens, Ora Tam Court, Ostrowski Court, and Wind Hall Towers, those are all HUD units, and they do count. But for, as far as Barcelona Court goes, only 48 of the 50 counted. Harry Berkey Gardens, 98 out of 100. Ora Tam Court, 133 out of 144. Ostrowski Court, 46 out of 50. Wind Hall Towers, all 100 units qualified. It just has to do with, the income standards vary slightly between the federal regulations and the state regulations, so we can't count all of the federal units. But, but it's open, but the rehabilitation is open to anyone within the city.
Now those 62, do we have a timeline when we got, we got to fill on by, or no?
The 60 unit, the affordable, the family rental project?
Yes.
We have, we have to apply at the, whoever, whichever developer we pick, if they're going for low income housing tax credits, they must apply in the next, at least the next two rounds. So we have to move on them pretty quickly.
No, do we have a date, like, we have to do this by this year?
Well, the housing round is over in 2025, so we have until 2025 to satisfy this.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And Nancy, just explain a little bit more about the 151 rehab. How do people go about applying for this? Is there a process? Is there somewhere they can do this, or does this have to be done by the city? How does this work?
Usually it's done through the, through the county. The, what they do is they usually advertise for it, it's called affirmatively marketing, is what, is the COA phrasing for it. I believe they do have on the county website a link to the home improvement program, and I believe you can apply through that link.
All right, well, if there's dates, Ted, this is something we should, you know, make sure that we publicize at our meetings, that if there's dates, even though this isn't a Hackensack initiative from the city, there, if there's dates that people need to be applying for this, and where they apply, I think we have to make sure that that information is out there.
But then the priority should be for the Hackensack resident, or yes, for anybody?
The county program is open to anyone in Bergen County, but yes, Hackensack residents absolutely can apply for it, so.
They have to meet a certain income threshold to be able to apply?
Yes, yes. You have to be lower or moderate income household.
And that's all defined on this, on the county website, should people need to get that information?
Yes, yes. You have to, you have to show financial documents, they have a, an array of, of documents that they require to qualify for the program.
And so this is not only, it, it, is this also open to private residences as well? So say you own your own home, but yet you're in, you've come within that threshold and you want your home, you, you need some work done on your home to be rehabbed, you can also apply?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, and that's the point I want to make sure that everybody understands. So it's not just housing project, housing units or apartments, it's also individual residents as well that meet the criteria for affordable or moderate housing, yes?
Yes, absolutely, yes. You don't have to have been in a predetermined affordable unit to participate in that program. It just so happens.
A lot of people don't realize that, a lot of people don't realize that. I think that somehow, whether it's the county or the city, I think Ted, that's something we could do a better job with, is making sure folks are aware of that, and how to participate in this initiative and get some of this stuff done.
I wrote it down, we'll follow through.
Great. But again, Dave, just so, so you're clear, so there's 60 new units that we're required to do, and then also that we, we're asked, also required to see that we can assist in getting the 151 existing units already rehabbed. But the city has always said, and we've been talking to folks additionally, that if we see the need within the city and we have people willing to do it, we'll build more than 60 units. So we are entertaining, you know, with more than one faction, the issue becomes, some of the people we're talking to are looking to do senior affordable because there's a real need there. I mean, and that's what, that's what seems to be coming up when they, when they're doing their research. So those would only count as 25%, but still, if, if we have people that are willing to build them and we see we have a need for them, we're going to do it regardless.
Although it's 25%, we still get full count credit for it being one...
We only get credit for 25% of them if it's all senior housing. Like, so say someone builds 60 units, and it's all senior, we only get credit for one fourth of them, or 15 units in that particular building, then we have to still continue to build more, correct Nancy?
Right, well, toward this, toward this current housing cycle. So if you, if, if it comes up that, that a developer wants to build 60 units, the housing cycle that starts in 2025, those units can count toward those. So, wrong with stockpiling, stockpiling credits.
So that means we have 45 left then?
That's right, that's right.
Correct.
We're, we're working on it, Dave, we're, we're working, you know, we're trying to get there, but we had to get, we have to get over this next hump first so that we're allowed to spend some of the monies, monies that we have in our affordable trust fund.
I understand, I just want to be...
First, you know, that's where we are in this process, and that's why having this hearing on the 22nd hopefully goes well, and then, you know, we can move to the next step.
I just want to be crystal clear.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so Ted, if you're finished, thank you so much, Nancy. I guess we're at the point now, we're ready to open to the public for a public comment. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Offer.
Second. Go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna say, before you cast the vote, also, and we go to public session, since I know I'm going to be asked about this, I did not mention at the start of the Cal meeting what we talked about in closed session in terms of litigation, so I just want to get that on the record before the public. We spoke about the Soroka workers' compensation matter, the Greenman litigation, and the affordable housing litigation, which Nancy briefed us on tonight, so I just want to throw that in there before I forget. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrusse is absent. Deputy Mayor, just so you know, we're at the five minute mark before seven.
Oh, okay. Well, at this time, anyone who would like to speak, and let's hope we can keep it brief, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the clerk.
Richard Solken, Hackensack, New Jersey. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Question on, on the bond ordinance, the one regarding the, the funds for the Sears parking lot, which I, I'm glad you're doing, is there, is there contract in existence or, or not? Have there been negotiations between the city and, and the, whoever the owner is now?
I'm sorry, can't...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But I think it'd be better if Ted answered that.
Okay, so, the city has reached out in, in conversation and made it known that we are aggressively interested in the purchase of that property. We had an appraisal done, there is no contract in place at this...
Okay. I, I hope you're prepared to go to eminent domain if necessary, because you need to grab that land, it's, it's crucial for the continued liability of that park, and I wouldn't want to see a fast food, well, not that any fast food places are being built right now, but someday they may be built again.
Understood.
Absolutely agree, Rick, it's critical for us to have that piece of property.
We share your vision.
Thank you. Just really quickly, to this home, if I may, I, I looked at the agreement, and I, I was very surprised, has, has the Hackensack Housing Authority, which, which is a federal, federal entity, have they been partners in this process, as generally speaking? Secondly, let me just, I'll get what's on my mind, we do have time constraints, and I don't want to push us too far. That's one thing. The, I'm concerned on the, 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 and along those lines, the Senzo units indicate that they have to, the Housing Authority needs to change the Hackensack residents' preference to get credit in this process. Do we have an existing agreement to that effect between the Housing Authority and the city? And finally, while it looks kind of nice in, in the agreement, you're talking about the arena and the, the owner expressed an interest in discuss, I don't know what that means, but, look, I, don't get me wrong, I know you seem to be sincere about wanting to build, I support that, and of course we have to avoid being exposed to a builder's remedy. So, if, if any of that, if you could decipher any of those questions, Mr. Sol, I appreciate your response, thank you.
Okay, well, I, I do, I have small children, so I suffer from small, you know, short-term memory loss at occasion, so let me make sure that I, that I got it. So the Hackensack Housing Authority is looking for property to propose a project. They thought they had some, and it didn't work out, but they're still actively looking for a project, and when they do, we will, you know, we will definitely...
I think my question's really, a lot of the numbers are their workings, which is fine, I mean, and obviously we get credit for that because it's happening within our borders, but have they, other than that, been, been in part, I don't want, not partnership, but cooperating, I mean, are they going to actually do that with the Senzo, do you have a commitment? Is that in writing? That they're going to take away the residents' preference in that? That's...
We've had discussions with them about it, so we're, we're waiting for them to, hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll be in discussions with them about, about all of it, and hopefully they've found a parcel soon, and we can...
Yeah, but your, your agreement you're presenting to the court seems to say it's a fait accompli, I'm a little concerned about that, but...
No, not necessarily, then in order for us to receive credit for those units, in 19, and I, forgive me, I believe it's 1994, the Supreme Court determined that residency preferences were illegal, so we cannot get credit for those, for those until we, we have a deal with Hackensack Housing Authority, so...
I, I, I support you, but I'm saying it doesn't, you don't have the agreement with them yet.
No, that's part of the next, so this, this process is bifurcated. The, the first process is going to the court and saying, hey, we have a settlement, what do you think? Do you think it's fair to...
They're satisfied, I dare you to phrase it this way, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
Let me just finish real quick, and then, so, we go in and say, hey, look, this is what we've come up with between us and Fair Share, is this, you know, Judge, do you think this is fair to low and moderate income households? And then, I'm hoping, because I think it is, that Judge Patavano agrees with me, and, and then what happens then is, okay, everything that's in your settlement agreement, city, now you have to go and make it on.
I dare you to phrase it this way, I mean, just, I know, our product is the less, but Fair Share is aware of the situation with the Senzo, and in terms of the settlement, they're okay with the present status and, let's say, the, the good faith of the city. That's like, that's where I'm at. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. No, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have signed it if they didn't think we were sincere and that it could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're welcome.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else willing, anyone else wishing to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Mary Walsh, 64 Davis Avenue, Hackensack. This morning I heard the woeful sound of a saw that could only mean a tree was being cut down. And although the Shade Tree Committee had received no request for evaluation of any trees with a problem, I took a walk up to the corner of Lewis and Cole. There I saw a tree with lots of green leaves being cut down. When I asked the person with the saw why, I was told it was dead. This afternoon I spoke with the owners, who are friends of mine, and confirmed that it was not dead. They said they had contacted the city for an evaluation, the city said someone would come out. Instead, very soon afterwards, someone from the city called and informed them the tree would be removed. Unfortunately, the sidewalk next to the tree could have been dealt with in one of several ways, using the brochure that the Shade Tree Committee developed in 2019. There was no attempt to reach out to the Shade Tree Committee to address the situation, even though the city has been well aware of the need to preserve trees. I know you're aware of Code 42-4, which the city manager also referenced, but one of the functions and responsibilities of the Shade Tree Committee shall be implemented through the mayor and city council, and shall consist of the following: to review all requests for the removal of any diseased, decayed, or otherwise damaged trees on public property, and with, within 30 days of such request, to report its recommendations to the mayor and council. Perhaps because the tree was not diseased, decayed, or damaged, the city thought it had cart belongs to take it down. This is unacceptable. I humbly suggest that someone develop a procedure to have these trees evaluated by the Shade Tree Committee. This isn't rocket science, the tree, with all this new construction coming in, all these people are now bringing more and more cars into the city. We know the trees clean the air, we know the trees prevent flooding, and to continue to take down these trees is really a travesty. Thank you.
Hey, do you have any feedback or any information on this particular tree? Do you know anything about it?
I do not, I will, I will follow up, but I don't know if she listened, but there's going to be a change in the ordinance which will clearly define roles of what the Shade Tree Commission is going to do and what the city's going to do.
I would like to add one more thing, and that is that I sent a copy of the Oprah request that showed that over 200 living trees have been removed by the DPW since January 2019. This is also unacceptable. When there's some kind of problem, when there's, when the sidewalk buckles, our brochure gives at least three different possibilities of dealing with that. And there are some people in the city who have done beautiful jobs of dealing with these enormous trees. This is a, this is a tremendous value for the city of Hackensack. If you go to northern Bergen County, one of the reasons why those, that property there is so much higher in value than Hackensack... is so much higher in value than Hackensack is because of the trees. So, you know, as we get more and more cars in here, we do need more, we need to preserve these trees. And I really am so thankful that there's going to be something new. But again, you know, why did the CPW just, even when the, when they told the homeowner that they were going to come in with an evaluation, to suddenly out of the blue say, oh, no, we're going to cut it down? Doesn't make any sense.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. We're really running out of time. I think the city may have to agree, get information on it and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? Hearing none, can I have a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrusse is absent.
Yeah, do we have to close the executive session now, too?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to close the executive session?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrusse is absent. And then we need a motion to close the Cal.
Can I have a motion to close the Cal meeting?
Offer.
Roll call.
Deputy, I'm sorry, Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrusse is absent.
Okay. With that, we'll see you in a few minutes at the council meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.